Room Moi TV here to the in Zavain, Sibeleve. Oleh February 9th, 11th, 21th, 22th, 23rd, 24th, 25th, 26th, 27th, 28th, 29th, 30th, 31th, 32th, 33th, 34th, 35th, 36th, 37th, 38th, 39th, 40th, 41th, 42th, 43th, 44th, 45th, 46th, 47th, 48th, 49th, 50th, 51th, 52th, 53th, 54th, 55th, 56th, 57th, 58th, 59th, 60th, 61th, 62th, 63th, 64th, 65th, 66th, 67th, 68th, 69th, 70th, 71th, 72th, 73th, 74th, 75th, 76th, 77th, 78th, 79th, 80th, 81th, 82th, 83th, 84th, 85th, 86th, 87th, 88th, 89th, 90th, 91th, 92th, 93th, 94th, 95th, 96th, 97th, 98th, 99th, 100th, 101th, 102th, 103th, 104th, 105th, 106th, 107th, 108th, 109th, 110th, 111th, 112th, 113th, 114th, 115th, 116th, 117th, 118th, 119th, 120th, 121th, 122th, 123th, 124th, 125th, 126th, 127th, 128th, 129th, 130th, 131th, 132th, 133th, 134th, 135th, 136th, 137th, 138th, 139th, 140th, 141th, 142th, 143th, 144th, 145th, 146th, 147th, 148th, 149th, 150th, 151th, 152th, 153th, 154th, 155th, 156th, 157th, 158th, 159th, 160th, 161th, 162th, 163th, 164th, 165th, 166th, 167th, 168th, 169th, 170th, 171th, 172th, 173th, 174th, 175th, 176th, 177th, 178th, 179th, 180th, 181th, 182th, 183th, 184th, 185th, 186th, 187th, 188th, 189th, 190th, 191th, 192th, 193th, 194th, 195th, 196th, 197th, 198th, 199th, 200th, 201th, 202th, 203th, 204th, 205th, 206th, 207th, 208th, 209th, 210th, 211th, 212th, 213th, 214th, 215th, 216th, 217th, 218th, 219th, 220th, 221th, 222th, 223th, 224th, 225th, 226th, 227th, 228th, 229th, 230th, 231th, 232th, 233th, 234th, 235th, 236th, 237th, 238th, 239th, 240th, 241th, 242th, 243th, 244th, 245th, 246th, 247th, 248th, 249th, 250th, 251th, 252th, 253th, 254th, 255th, 256th, 257th, 258th, 259th, 260th, 261th, 262th, 263th, 264th, 265th, 266th, 267th, 268th, 269th, 270th, 271th, 272th, 273th, 274th, 275th, 276th, 277th, 278th, 279th, 280th, 281th, 282th, 283th, 284th, 285th, 286th, 287th, 288th, 289th, 290th, 291th, 292th, 293th, 294th, 295th, 296th, 297th, 298th, 299th, 300th, 301th, 302th, 303th, 304th, 305th, 306th, 307th, 308th, 309th, 310th, 311th, 312th, 313th, 314th, 315th, 316th, 317th, 318th, 319th, 320th, 321th, 322th, 323th, 324th, 325th, 326th, 327th, 328th, 329th, 330th, 331th, 332th, 333th, 334th, 335th, 336th, 337th, 338th, 339th, 340th, 341th, 342th, 343th, 344th, 345th, 346th, 347th, 348th, 349th, 350th, 351th, 352th, 353th, 354th, 355th, 356th, 357th, 358th, 359th, 360th, 361th, 362th, 363th, 364th, 365th, 366th, 367th, 368th, 369th, 370th, 371th, 372th, 373th, 374th, 375th, 376th, 377th, 378th, 379th, 380th, 381th, 382th, 383th, 384th, 385th, 386th, 387th, 388th, 389th, 390th, 391th, 392th, 393th, 394th, 395th, 396th, 397th, 398th, 399th, 400th, 401th, 402th, 403th, 404th, 405th, 406th, 407th, 408th, 409th, 410th, 411th, 412th, 413th, 414th, 415th, 416th, 417th, 418th, 419th, 420th, 421th, 422th, 423th, 424th, 425th, 426th, 427th, 428th, 429th, 430th, 431th, 432th, 433th, 434th, 435th, 436th, 437th, 438th, 439th, 440th, 441th, 442th, 443th, 444th, 445th, 446th, 447th, 448th, 449th, 450th, 451th, 452th, 453th, 454th, 455th, 456th, 457th, 458th, 459th, 460th, 461th, 462th, 463th, 464th, 465th, 466th, 467th, 468th, 469th, 470th, 471th, 472th, 473th, 474th, 475th, 476th, 477th, 478th, 479th, 480th, 481th, 482th, 483th, 484th, 485th, 486th, 487th, 488th, 489th, 490th, 491th, 492th, 493th, 494th, 495th, 496th, 497th, 498th, 499th, 500th, 501th, 502th, 503th, 504th, 505th, 506th, 507th, 508th, 509th, 510th, 511th, 512th, 513th, 514th, 515th, 516th, 517th, 518th, 519th, 520th, 521th, 522th, 523th, 524th, 525th, 526th, 527th, 528th, 529th, 530th, 531th, 532th, 533th, 534th, 535th, 536th, 537th, 538th, 539th, 540th, 541th, 542th, 543th, 544th, 545th, 546th, 547th, 548th, 549th, 550th, 551th, 552th, 553th, 554th, 555th, 556th, 557th, 558th, 559th, 560th, 561th, 562th, 563th, 564th, 565th, 566th, 567th, 568th, 569th, 570th, 571th, 572th, 573th, 574th, 575th, 576th, 577th, 578th, 579th, 580th, 581th, 582th, 583th, 584th, 585th, 586th, 587th, 588th, 589th, 590th, 591th, 592th, 593th, 594th, 595th, 596th, 597th, 598th, 599th, 600th, 601th, 602th, 603th, 604th, 605th, 606th, 607th, 608th, 609th, 610th, 611th, 612th, 613th, 614th, 615th, 616th, 617th, 618th, 619th, 620th, 621th, 622th, 623th, 624th, 625th, 626th, 627th, 628th, 629th, 630th, 631th, 632th, 633th, 634th, 635th, 636th, 637th, 638th, 639th, 640th, 641th, 642th, 643th, 644th, 645th, 646th, 647th, 648th, 649th, 650th, 651th, 652th, 653th, 654th, 655th, 656th, 657th, 658th, 659th, 660th, 661th, 662th, 663th, 664th, 665th, 666th, 667th, 668th, 669th, 670th, 671th, 672th, 673th, 674th, 675th, 676th, 677th, 678th, 679th, 680th, 681th, 682th, 683th, 684th, 685th, 686th, 687th, 688th, 689th, 690th, 691th, 692th, 693th, 694th, 695th, 696th, 697th, 698th, 699th, 700th, 701th, 702th, 703th, 704th, 705th, 706th, 707th, 708th, 709th, 710th, 711th, 712th, 713th, 714th, 715th, 716th, 717th, 718th, 719th, 720th, 721th, 722th, 723th, 724th, 725th, 726th, 727th, 728th, 729th, 730th, 731th, 732th, 733th, 734th, 735th, 736th, 737th, 738th, 739th, 740th, 741th, 742th, 743th, 744th, 745th, 746th, 747th, 748th, 749th, 750th, 751th, 752th, 753th, 754th, 755th, 756th, 757th, 758th, 759th, 760th, 761th, 762th, 763th, 764th, 765th, 766th, 767th, 768th, 769th, 770th, 771th, 772th, 773th, 774th, 775th, 776th, 777th, 778th, 779th, 780th, 781th, 782th, 783th, 784th, 785th, 786th, 787th, 788th, 789th, 790th, 791th, 792th, 793th, 794th, 795th, 796th, 797th, 798th, 799th, 800th, 801th, 802th, 803th, 804th, 805th, 806th, 807th, 808th, 809th, 810th, 811th, 812th, 813th, 814th, 815th, 816th, 817th, 818th, 819th, 820th, 821th, 822th, 823th, 824th, 825th, 826th, 827th, 828th, 829th, 830th, 831th, 832th, 833th, 834th, 835th, 836th, 837th, 838th, 839th, 840th, 841th, 842th, 843th, 844th, 845th, 846th, 847th, 848th, 849th, 850th, 851th, 852th, 853th, 854th, 855th, 856th, 857th, 858th, 859th, 860th, 861th, 862th, 863th, 864th, 865th, 866th, 867th, 868th, 869th, 870th, 871th, 872th, 873th, 874th, 875th, 876th, 877th, 878th, 879th, 880th, 881th, 882th, 883th, 884th, 885th, 886th, 887th, 888th, 889th, 890th, 891th, 892th, 893th, 894th, 895th, 896th, 897th, 898th, 899th, 900th, 901th, 902th, 903th, 904th, 905th, 906th, 907th, 908th, 909th, 910th, 911th, 912th, 913th, 914th, 915th, 916th, 917th, 918th, 919th, 920th, 921th, 922th, 923th, 924th, 925th, 926th, 927th, 928th, 929th, 930th, 931th, 932th, 933th, 934th, 935th, 936th, 937th, 938th, 939th, 940th, 941th, 942th, 943th, 944th, 945th, 946th, 947th, 948th, 949th, 950th, 951th, 952th, 953th, 954th, 955th, 956th, 957th, 958th, 959th, 960th, 961th, 962th, 963th, 964th, 965th, 966th, 967th, 968th, 969th, 969th, 970th, 971th, 972th, 973th, 974th, 975th, 976th, 977th, 978th, 979th, 980th, 981th, 982th, 983th, 984th, 985th, 986th, 987th, 988th, 989th, 989th, 990th, 991th, 992th, 993th, 994th, 995th, 996th, 997th, 998th, 999th, 1000th, 1001th, 1002th, 1003th, 1004th, 1005th, 1006th, 1007th, 1008th, 1009th, 1010th, 1011th, 1012th, 1013th, 1014th, 1015th, 1016th, 1017th, 1018th, 1019th, 1019th, 1020th, 1021th, 1022th, 1023th, 1024th, 1025th, 1026th, 1027th, 1028th, 1029th, 1029th, 1030th, 1031th, 1032th, 1033th, 1034th, 1035th, 1036th, 1037th, 1038th, 1039th, 1040th, 1041th, 1042th, 1043th, 1044th, 1045th, 1046th, 1047th, 1048th, 1049th, 1050th, 1051th, 1052th, 1053th, 1054th, 1055th, 1056th, 1057th, 1058th, 1059th, 1059th, 1060th, 1061th, 1062th, 1063th, 1064th, 1065th, 1066th, 1067th, 1068th, 1069th, 1070th, 1071th, 1072th, 1073th, 1074th, 1075th, 1076th, 1077th, 1078th, 1079th, 1080th, 1081th, 1082th, 1083th, 1084th, 1085th, 1086th, 1087th, 1088th, 1089th, 1090th, 1091th, 1092th, 1093th, 1094th, 1095th, 1096th, 1097th, 1098th, 1099th, 1099th, 1100th, 1101th, 1102th, 1103th, 1104th, 1105th, 1106th, 1107th, 1108th, 1109th, 1110th, 1111th, 1112th, 1113th, 1114th, 1115th, 1116th, 1117th, 1118th, 1119th, 1119th, 1120th, 1121th, 1122th, 1123th, 1124th, 1125th, 1126th, 1127th, 1128th, 1129th, 1130th, 1131th, 1132th, 1133th, 1134th, 1135th, 1136th, 1137th, 1138th, 1139th, 1139th, 1140th, 1141th, 1142th, 1143th, 1144th, 1145th, 1146th, 1147th, 1148th, 1149th, 1150th, 1151th, 1152th, 1153th, 1154th, 1155th, 1156th, 1157th, 1158th, 1159th, 1160th, 1161th, 1162th, 1163th, 1164th, 1165th, 1166th, 1167th, 1168th, 1169th, 1170th, 1171th, 1172th, 1173th, 1174th, 1175th, 1176th, 1177th, 1178th, 1179th, 1180th, 1181th, 1182th, 1183th, 1184th, 1185th, 1186th, 1187th, 1188th, 1189th, 1190th, 1191th, 1192th, 1193th, 1194th, 1195th, 1196th, 1197th, 1198th, 1199th, 1200th, 1201th, 1202th, 1203th, 1204th, 1205th, 1206th, 1207th, 1208th, 1209th, 1210th, 1211th, 1212th, 1213th, 1214th, 1215th, 1216th, 1217th, 1218th, 1219th, 1220th, 1221th, 1222th, 1223th, 1224th, 1225th, 1226th, 1227th, 1228th, 1229th, 1230th, 1231th, 1232th, 1233th, 1234th, 1235th, 1236th, 1237th, 1238th, 1239th, 1240th, 1241th, 1242th, 1243th, 1244th, 1245th, 1246th, 1247th, 1248th, 1249th, 1250th, 1251th, 1252th, 1253th, 1254th, 1255th, 1256th, 1257th, 1258th, 1259th, 1260th, 1261th, 1262th, 1263th, 1264th, 1265th, 1266th, 1267th, 1268th, 1269th, 1270th, 1271th, 1272th, 1273th, 1274th, 1275th, 1276th, 1277th, 1278th, 1279th, 1280th, 1281th, 1282th, 1283th, 1284th, 1285th, 1286th, 1287th, 1288th, 1289th, 1290th, 1291th, 1292th, 1293th, 1294th, 1295th, 1296th, 1297th, 1298th, 1299th, 1300th, 1301th, 1302th, 1303th, 1304th, 1305th, 1306th, 1307th, 1308th, 1309th, 1310th, 1311th, 1312th, 1313th, 1314th, 1315th, 1316th, 1317th, 1318th, 1319th, 1320th, 1321th, 1322th, 1323th, 1324th, 1325th, 1326th, 1327th, 1328th, 1329th, 1330th, 1331th, 1332th, 1333th, 1334th, 1335th, 1336th, 1337th, 1338th, 1339th, 1340th, 1341th, 1342th, 1343th, 1344th, 1345th, 1346th, 1347th, 1348th, 1349th, 1350th, 1351th, 1352th, 1352. [S01] Oleh,[S01] tunai hian kabula hianin zemabok local forum member,[S01] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S01] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S01] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S01] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale.
Oleh,[S02] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok hianin vote la tihichhatouem,[S02] engene vote la tansin dia sreitoumem? Oleh,[S02] tiswanin engene tunna hianin government primary school chi zemabok akan ommeka,[S02] tunai hian kabula hianin zemabok local forum member,[S02] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S02] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S02] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S02] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale.
Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin government primary school chi zemabok akan ommeka,[S03] tunai hian kabula hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin government primary school chi zemabok akan ommeka,[S03] tunai hian kabula hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Oleh,[S03] tiswanin engene tunna hianin zemabok local forum member,[S03] anu laremi kabula hian oma,[S03] ani hie zonatlemte kanhanzodle,[S03] tiswanin hie tunna village council,[S03] local council in kana hianin zemabok local forum tianin engene malaknale. Tun ahianin arm vén ah kan omme ka tiswan hei en bowling area te kan lutanga tiswan MPF te tin candidate kan muurem zan zan te ah tin antukhotang te po kan nga itlanga komhun kanun nai le donani. Tun ahianin arm vén ah kan omme ka tiswan kabula ahianin pulal thanzava congress ah local council candidate kabula ahian oma zona tlemazong kan zor donani. Tun ahian hei local council candidate inita ah congress ayoin dro congress party ta changin candidate in dia. Ta tiswanin enge nangma in mudan lettingtin beisiem?
Atuna landana hitzu tlingvetuasun kanin beisi. Sorkar na polak kanin beisi.
Party ang zongpon mo. Ani tiswanin enge hei in thandeka anhan pot anan sonma tasiya. Ta tiswanin i campaign huntehi in nee chatokini xiaem?
Ah campaign hi local councila hitzu tiswan sorkar ni nitlang puya mo. Ah tlem tiswang lauwa ah hunamata lai hianin engma ati tlem tiswang lau. Oh ni chatoak toua.
Ani tiswanin party ang zongponin beisi sang vya varimo?
Tun ah sorkar lai kan ya congress sorkar lai kan ya mo. Eh pasari agen pali kan ya congress mo. Tsituan tun apohian eh party patum triangular fightanivang hian sorkar lezuka nin beisi. Patiyan zara.
Ani taktsu hunchatak mintpea kan lomle may du sakna kan than nga bokse oh.
Eh kipokalome.
Tun ahianin arm vén ah MNF candidate puke si lechuan liana kan bulahian oma zona tlemazong kan zor lok donani. Enge nangma tun chum eh local council in thana ahian in mudanle?
Eh in mutia maharrengkopme ya chatto zu katsoa vén kan sia. Aba zu mi puyin tayla ma hian nan ditxiang may toura kan nga ya.
Ani tiswanin party ang zongten enge sorkar na te in lak tehite in ringem arm vén vén tsuahian?
Ne hei poy mo kopme ya oh majority xiam tehin sang zu kanin beisi eh.
Tiswanin ka in thandeka anhan sonma tasiya. Kata ahin a party ang zongten tin ami malang zongte po in i in campaign chatanem?
Oh du tu tu sam lau deu ni eh sorkar kan aranti rumruma. Kan chatto zu kan tsua vea aba zu tila turpo kan chatto tiswang lauwa. Ngang kan kalkuala oh sorkar na puani changha tathalavin kan beinhal tsar tsarani.
Ani tiswanin hei ah lautlingzou lau ta ulaa e mo i sorkar na law xiam tehia lau tapo ni ulaa party dangni na tokhou tehi nanggi in ngaidanle?
Ne hei poy mo kopme zona apoka kan donghe ma. Hitzu kan party houtu te tu tuh toura kan nga potzu ni eh hmm.
Ani tiswanin hunchatak mintpea kan lomah du sakla sang berkan than nga se oh.
Kipokalome.
Tun ahianin arm vén sauda kan omme ka kabula ahianin MNF party candidate puke thantuma aoma zona tlemazong kan hanzor lok donani. Ah putum eh enge tun ah local council candidate inita niya in niya niya. Ta tiswanin ah termasa te po ilauding toua dro ilaudling toua. Ta tiswanin enge tun ah kum ah candidate in niya in campaign na tehian enge tiya danglamdeu te tonte ineyem tun kum ya danglamdeu in xiaem?
Eh nei tjuang love. Nea ani napongwa tiswan kan han kalkual vea. Kan tehang tokin lai chu chu ni deu maya danglam na eme ma om lauwa. So chu kasai chatto kan ni maya.
Ani le nangma mimala angin enge in beisiem?
Eh patiyan tu tuh akan nga ya mi pui tehi anfela ancha. Chatto ka kan lou tsuang anlautsela eh la om kan dikopa amaro tuh kan tinale tin lau na chu chungla bang tu tuh ni eh.
Ani le a party ang zongin enge inin beisiem sorkar na xiam te?
Ah chu po chu chu tia nga touzu ni. Patiyan tu tuh akan kan hatopme.
Ani le hei in thandeka kan han sonma niya kata ahin enge nangmani a party lamate tin mimal anga pun duangtha la kan campaign man lau na te enge mohar san na te ah duangtha la kan campaign man lau ka inneyem?
Nei chan love eh kan tehang touxang kan vén tsung zu kan fangtsuak vea. Masé du tu cha mak hitzu tihi ani tak tak tehilem lauwa. Amaro tuh mi pui te hian vot le tu lau chu anthea changthiam toura kan nga ya. Atai tiswan patiyan tu tuh ni rual hin mi pui te miriru ney chatu zu patiyanani ah. Tsu vangin patiyan ku dahin kanin hatopme ni.
Eh hun lutak mintpea kan lom takzeta du sakna sang berkan than bokse oh.
Eh kalome.
Tun ahianin arm vén saud congress candidate ah pulal ramwa na kabula ahianin oma zona tlemazong kan hanzor lok donani. Ah enge tun ah mimal angin enge in ngaidan lettingtin beisiem?
Eh beisi na zu kan nai sang kopme ya mani ah tiswan amaro tuh enge mi pui miriru ka kan va re lauwa. Eh mi te kongai na ah vang tiswan tlingtura kanin nga.
Ani party ang ten enge sorkar na ten xiam tehite in beisiem?
Ne hei soythiam ahara kandidei ancha. Koi party mi po hi kandidei ti mi fel tak tak mitcha tak tak vekan niya. Chula ya tiswanin eh enge vanai na changturpon eh in beisi na sang takzuka ni mani zu kan nai toua. Amaro tuh tsuti rual tiswan eh mi pui tehianin hei la ya state sorkar zo ka te eh ZPM ruling ten lau niya eh katia nga rak eh enge keni opposition tanitiswanin eh sans om tou in se mayla ah mi puyin ngaidanani kan tangu.
Ani le hei party angte po in i sorkar na law xiam tehia lau poita ulaa party dang tok pui tehi enge iniru greengem?
Ah katitzon tiswan ngaitu na kan laseng mia lauwa amaro tuh oh engpo lau thengte niya. Chu nga tiswan engpo lau thengsela mimala eh party malang sorkar na xiam tei lau om lau ta angponi ta salangin. Heni congress party ta tiswanin kan houtu te eh thuro nin ke kan lapen se langzu.
Ani le zona to berata nin hei ah in thanhunte kan han sonma ahani ta. Ta ahin nangmani mimal ang mo party ang po in campaign huntehi in nee chatokini xiaem?
Ah akampeina shimshimhu zuh hunhi atcha toak toua eh vén tsunga mey xian lau tak tak kan om tiswala vén tsung mi vetou kan nin kandidei ta vang hian. Eh akampeina huntsung ka zuh eh hun kan nai toucha. Amaro tuh akandidei zon tsungzoga ka. Ka ka atai ta eme maya eh in thanan onpuana changa ka khatnavela last nomination ka file turkan anron ti ta sia. Ka ka kandidei te mitcha tak tak han zonga han rimku tak tak turkan kan huntsu duai tisana zeep deu ni.
Ani le i kamhi party candidate inzon kongha kanin enge nangmani party ami tenge tin vén po eh vén tsungami eh party member ni emem lem lau te po ka inan tivetouem?
Oh tivetouve eh vén tsunga mitcha tour kan vén eh ta na mitcha touran ka. Eh kandidei kan zon nakongha tiswanin kan melbera eh chu chu kandidei kanin zon dan zu ni maya.
Hunchatak mintpea kan lom du katsuan du sakla sang berkan than bokse oh.
Kalome.
Tun ahianin arm vén saud ZPM candidate pulal thanzava kabula ahian dinga. Ah zona tlemazong kan hanzor dona eh tun kum in thana ahian enge beisi dan te lettingin ringem?
Oh masain ruunmoi chanel lau. Lom tuh kan soy katia nga nacang rangshei hi kan lom kopme. Ne hei patiyan le vén tsung mi pui te du sakna zara. Tun chum electioni ne na kan chanhe kanin beisi ni.
Ani tiswanin party ang zongpo in sorkar na xiam teh in beisiem?
Oh kanin beisi kum inin thana ahian soyto angha patiyan le mi pui te zara. Sorkar na kan xiam teh kanin beisi ni.
Ani tiswanin ka in thandeka kan han sonma niya. Ta ahin campaign zhungza nga ahin party moa mimal ang po in ah in du tu sami nin campaign manem?
Nea kanin thanghi vén tsung til ani avang hian eh party tin te po hian vén tsunga mi mingcha le. Mitcha ni anxiat ni puyi van thangte po nan duron ni anxiat hi kandidei hi anxiat thangpuya. Campaign zhungza nga po hian campaign lou po ni se vén tsung inan du thangni hi poy moa. Tsuti rual tiswan kandidei te tanpoa campaign houtak lutuxilau hun om tousihi ato kopin gashia.
Ani taktsu kan zona de min chanceka kan lom takzeta tiswan tlinge deu po du sakna kan than se oh.
Oh kan lomé.
Tun ahianin arm vén saud MPF president pulal rou tarabula kan omme ka. Tiswan zona tlemazong kan hanzor vén ah tun chum local council in than ahianin engtine MPF dehian ma in lakdanle?
Hei kan hetwot alamina ti turan tia nga kan paang tok touzut kan han zong vea. Kuminta hitzu kan MPF ha kan ring leader berhi arawan hon ruata. Eh du ang tak tiswan hmm kan tithim touk lauwa amaro tuh ma zara touhian engkim ka. Amanarunrua panfela. Eh tiswan kan ti turan hitzu kan hativé nok noksel zu ni eh.
Ani tiswanin votla tehi enge antole arm vén sauda hian?
Ni chinlok kan kan han oh dar som panhi bor kan vot sangha za somnga le pasari tlatoua. Ah hai tlaqta vél hitzu kan ti.
Ani tiswanin arm vén sauda ahianin vote engzad ni vay omle atlang pui tuin xia?
Sang thum zakua bor ka kanin xier dan katzu ni.
Ani tiswanin hei MPF dehianin eh member hi volunteer angani ta dro. Ta ahianin engtine in ah thanswangi niya in ruadanhi koshan koshan angin ngai kan kan minhan soyfia sakle letse.
Elavin kan tiya keni ya hian ya koshana tiswan arm vén east le arm vén saud Presbyterian koshan hikanin deu maya. Ikeke te telchin te eh le. He koshan dang salvation te poran telchin hou kanan tel talawa. Tun ah tiswan Presbyterian koshan panhi kanin deu maya. Ta tiswan leader eh volunteer leader kanin ruata eh MPF committee local committee baka hian leader assistant leader te kan han ruata tsunghou tiswan secretary tenen eh tun ahian volunteer turka mi somnga bor hin han ruale zonga. Ani tiswan hei zanina hian vot xierah enge mo tu la. Eh pianga han che turin mingemusat anitel changboka. Tiswan zanina hian kan tum dan tiswan eh MPF lam hian ting pui te po pek kan tum veni vot xierhou hi. Hian su kan malak dan tisuni ya eh committee baka volunteer somnga bor kan han se vela. Eh tia nga chu kan che dan tisuni deu tangpui may.
Ani tiswanin hunchatak mintpea kan lom takzete?
Keni po kan lomé.
Katitzon ka kan hunruntman hout teh tiswanin ah. Vén shang shangakoshang shangah local council village council candidate tlingchel turin du sakla sang ber ruunmoi ti vi tiswan kan than se varini. In savain hunman duamvek ule.